And it's just the way it goes.
All right, meeting called order. This is the June 17th, 2025, meeting of the Oakland Borough Council. Would the clerk please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law duly announced, advertised, and posted in the municipal building. The meeting will adjourn no later than 10:00 p.m. unless the majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time.
Thank you. Would the commander please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment if I may. Roll call.
Mayor Kamala.
Present.
Council President McCann.
Here.
Councilman Pignatelli. Councilwoman Rose.
Here.
Councilman Salianni.
Here.
Councilman Slisinski.
Here.
Councilman Talamini.
Here.
Will say.
Make a motion to excuse Councilman Pignatelli.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we have a special presentation tonight for a Richard Fiallo. He's going to be joining the U.S. Army. He's a graduate of Ramapo High School. And he's an Oakland resident, correct?
Yeah.
So at this time, I'd like to bring Richard forward. And I also would like to ask Mike McNulty, the commander from the American Legion, to come forward. Mike, would you like to go first?
I would.
Okay.
So we have a tradition of giving a certificate of honor to people who are joining the military. It reads as such. Certificate of Honor. This certificate is presented to honor Richard Fiallo in recognition and grateful appreciation for entering the United States Armed Forces in the name of freedom and democracy and for allegiance to God and country, courageously protecting liberty and independence. This is presented by Michael McNulty, commander of American Legion Post 369, Department of New Jersey. And we'd like to say welcome to our Blue Star families, okay, locally.
Thank you so much.
We wish you greatest luck, and we are here to support you through your entire career in the service. If you have any questions, my card's in there. You can call us, and we'll help you out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And also, we have something here from the Borough of Oakland. We have a proclamation honoring Richard Fiallo for committing to serve in the United States Army, whereas the Borough of Oakland takes great pride in recognizing honoring young men and women of our community who demonstrate extraordinary courage and patriotism by choosing to serve in the armed forces of the United States. And whereas Richard Fiallo, a member of the graduating class of 2025 of Ramapo High School, has committed to enlist in the United States Army following graduation. And whereas Richard Fiallo has shown exceptional character, determination, and deep sense of duty to country, choosing a path of service and sacrifice in defense of the freedoms and values we hold dear as Americans. And whereas by making this commitment, Richard Fiallo joins a long proud tradition of brave individuals who have answered the call to serve and protect the United States of America. And whereas the mayor council of the Borough of Oakland, along with its residents, wish to express their deep appreciation and admiration for Richard's service and to offer support and encouragement as he embarks on his honorable journey. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Mayor Eric Kamala, on behalf of the Borough Council and residents of Oakland, do hereby recognize and honor Richard Fiallo for his courage, courageous commitment to serve in the United States Army, and extend our heartfelt gratitude and best wishes for his successful distinguished military career. Be further proclaimed. This proclamation is entered in the official records of the Borough of Oakland as a lasting tribute to Richard Fiallo's dedication of patriotism dated June 17th, 2025. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's give him a round of applause. Just a commemorative coin from Oakland, so you can remember this day and thank you for everything.
That's your first challenge coin.
There you go.
Many more to come.
There you go.
You don't get yours from me until you get to boot camp.
Good luck. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you, everybody. Okay, our next order of business is we are going to hire a new police officer, Bradley Hildebrandt. And we have Resolution 25-184 to hire Police Officer Bradley Hildebrandt. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Council President McCann.
Yes.
Councilman Pignatelli. Councilwoman Rose.
Yes.
Councilman Salianni.
Yes.
Councilman Slisinski.
Yes.
Councilman Talamini.
Yes.
All right, this time I'd like to ask Bradley to come forward with his family, whoever's holding the Bible, and we're going to swear in. Put your hand on the Bible if you like. This is the oath of office for Police Officer Oakland Eager.
Yes, sir.
I, Bradley Hildebrandt.
I, Bradley Hildebrandt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments.
And the government.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Welcome to Oakland.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're almost done. Not official till you sign it. Thank you. All right, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess. For those people that would like to stay, can stay. Those that would like to leave, can leave. Thank you, everybody. All right, this time we are up to the mayor's report. I've got a couple items here. First of all, myself, a member of the governing body, attended the Valley Middle School graduation. There were 149 graduates. I want to wish all the eighth graders that are moving out to high school the best of luck in their high school years. Also, for the carnival, carnival's in town. Councilman Salianni is going to be providing more information, but I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow is the last day for the discount wristbands, and it ends at 3:00 o'clock. So if you're going to buy the wristbands, make sure you buy them by 3:00 tomorrow, then the price goes up. Safety Town in Oakland is going to be held July 8th, 9th, and 10th, and 14th, 15th, and 16th. Oakland, I'm sure you've seen all the social media announcements coming out that have come out already. The Oakland Road Paving Program has started. It's begun. They're currently working on curb cuts, and that's going to be followed by milling and paving. Yaupau Avenue, just so everybody knows, will be done this year. Right now, our engineer is in correspondence with the Department of Transportation because it is a grant, and they're just getting, you know, finer points worked out, and we expect to have it on the agenda for next meeting. Jerome Avenue and West Oakland Ave will be closed tomorrow for the duration. There will be a detour. They're working on the stormwater drains in that area. I'm sure a lot of people have seen, especially the kids, the new playground by the Danny D Building is progressing nicely. They've been working on it now for about a week. We expect all the superstructure to be completed by the end of the week, and then they'll be putting down the surface, weather permitting. Once again, weather's been very challenging for this spring. Myself and members of the governing body also attended the Flag Day ceremony last Saturday at the Elks Club. And if anybody's been down at Great Oak Park, you're starting to see the new fencing being installed as you come into the entrance, so it's really, the improvements in Great Oak Park are also moving along nicely. Just want to make everybody aware that we have a special meeting, a special meeting, June 23rd. It's going to be a combined meeting of the planning board and the governing body. This is for our fourth round affordable housing. So it's going to be a meeting, and it's going to be held down at the senior center. It will not be here. It will be the senior center, 7:00 p.m., special meeting with the planning board. Patriots Way Bridge update. They have completed all the concrete sidewalks. Orange Rockland has finished the electrical work for the streetlights. The grading and base course of asphalt have been completed for both approaches on the bridge. Unfortunately, once again, we are losing several days due to weather. We didn't have crews out there at all this week. Fortunately, the weather's not being cooperative. Looking forward, they have one more day of installing rebar for the parapits. Once the rebar is installed, it's going to be, the carpenters will be coming in to build out the forms for the Jersey Barrier, which is a parapet on the bridge itself. That should take a couple weeks, and that will be followed by a concrete pour. And the concrete has to set for 28 days, but in the meantime, they're going to be working on the guide rail, and they will be milling and paving the project all the way out through 202. And that concludes my report at this time. Do we have a motion open for public comment?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Anybody wish to address the governing body?
Hi, good evening. Christopher Bermudez, 28, Cayuga Ave. Just wanted to ask the Borough to consider adopting an ordinance preventing people from parking on their front lawn. I emailed.
Yep.
It's becoming out of control, and I dealt with the code enforcement officer. There's 10 cars. It looks like a junkyard on the corner when you pull into the development, and he can't do anything because there's no ordinance. It's one of the only towns without an ordinance preventing people from parking on their front lawn.
Okay. Mr. Coons, I did forward you that email.
Yes, yeah, I got it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, which street did you say you live on?
Cayuga.
Cayuga, thank you.
Okay. We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Have a nice night.
Anybody else wish to address the governing body?
Marisol Kozlowski, 19 Barnard Drive. I just want to say thank you to the town council for constantly supporting all of the groups and organizations in our town. And I know Mr. Salianni is going to discuss the Oakland Town Carnival. I just wanted folks to realize that the Town Carnival is completely volunteer. I think a lot of folks lately I've been seeing on social media way too much that folks don't seem to understand that the Public Events Committee is completely a volunteer group. The carnival is a fundraiser. It is the biggest fundraiser for most of our organizations in town. I, myself, am volunteering on many different groups. I'm on, I believe, five at this point in this town.
Got one more coming today.
Well, that would be the fifth. That one is the fifth, and I actually want to say that might be a double. I might have actually joined a few months ago, and there was just a paperwork issue, but that's fine. It's a committee I'm passionate about, so the Arts Committee, so it's a good thing. But basically, I wanted to remind folks that when they go to the carnival, please go, even rain or shine. We are going to be running unless there's lightning. The hours have changed. It is 6:00 to 10:00 Monday, excuse me, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then on Saturday, it is 5:00 to 11:00. Okay, so the hours have changed from the past. But I would like to remind folks to please, 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 yes, buy the funnel cake from the Boy Scouts and absolutely enjoy the meatballs from the Moms. They absolutely need all the funds they can get for those things. But also to try and stop into some of the booths for the other volunteer groups. Many of the groups are in great need of volunteers. And I would ask the town council members, when you guys are out there and you're talking to the new residents, especially the new residents, and, you know, just communicating with them, getting to know them better, please try and recommend them to different groups like our Green Team or Environmental Commission, the Gardening Club, for example. Did you guys know the Gardening Club is still running? Because it still is. It is going in conjunction with the Flow Community. There's many different groups out there. There's a newcomers' club that a lot of new folks in town don't know about, as well as rec and Mothers Club and Fathers Club and Knights of Columbus and the places that we all know. So I would ask that you do that. And on my last note, I'm also a member of the Oakland Historical Society. That group predominantly has been functioning to do programs to educate our young people. Their main thing is to run a second-grade class trip that all the students should go to the Van Allen House and participate in. It's a phenomenal program. They also do a program with the schools for fifth grade now for Colonial Day, and also with our rec camp that runs in the summertime. But the Oakland Historical Society is dying. I'm not going to lie. It's dying. We don't have enough volunteers. We don't have enough new blood. We don't have enough young people. We don't even have enough people to man a booth this year at the carnival. That's just the reality of the situation. And I've had this conversation with Mr. Kamala and a couple of you in the past. I really do feel that the historical society, or a historical society in a town, should be doing so much more than just youth programs. Today's happenings are tomorrow's history, okay? History's got its eyes on all of you guys. In 10 years, what are people going to remember from what you've done on the council? We don't have a place to go, one single place, to find Oakland's history. Where can we go if you're a high school student right now who's like looking to do a report on 9/11? Where do you go to get a list of the Oakland residents that were involved? Not only the ones that perished, but the ones who volunteered, the ones who helped, the ones who were working there. We don't have any sort of unification of information to do that. Wouldn't it be great if we had a website that could do that, that you could look up main events? You could look up when the community garden first started. I believe it's coming up on either its fifth, right?
Five or six years.
Anniversary as well. You know, our town anniversary is coming up. All of these wonderful events, I want my children to grow up in a town where they take pride in our history, as well as what's happening today. So I would ask you, we can't force people to volunteer. You can't, you know, just say you have to do it. I've had some people tell me, kids today have no interest in history. I can tell you that my programs, they absolutely do. We have a wall at our programs. So could we possibly consider maybe getting a town historian? Or at least talking to volunteers who, they don't have to be a cosplayer, dressing up in a costume or putting on a show. We need people to do a website. We need people to gather information. We need people to organize photographs, maybe just have a central dump zone where if I have photographs of an event and someone else does, we can all put them in there. My daughter's participated in a beautiful ceremony right in front of this building for the Girl Scouts 110th anniversary. I have amazing pictures of that. I would love to share that with the town. And that was over 10 years ago, okay? So I would ask you to please consider the possibility of at some point creating a historian position, okay? That's it.
Thank you, Marisol. May I ask a question?
Sure, certainly.
What is your role in the carnival? What are you doing?
I am a member of the Public Events Team.
Right.
So I'm there as a helper. I am a member of the Green Team, so I will be manning the booth at the Green Team. I am a member of the Oakland Historical Society. I teach CCD. I work with Pon's Church. I work with Ramapo Valley Baptist Church. They're a children's group. I've been a worker there. I am just a concerned citizen. The way I volunteer, the reason I'm in so many different groups is I don't go in to run a group. I don't go in to lead a committee. I go in and, okay, where do you need a two-hour shift? Where do you need this? Where do you do that? That enables me to do four or five different groups because I can hit a meeting once a month. And then if I give two hours and someone else joins, if I can get three people today to volunteer to give two hours, that'll take somebody off a seven-hour shift, an eight-hour shift, okay? And to me, that's how we should be volunteering. I've been a coach in rec. My kids have aged out. They're older now, okay? So I've been a coach in rec. I've done a lot with the PTOs all through the schools, all the way from K through high school. My baby is now going into her junior year, but she's going to be going to Mary Help.
When did you first start volunteering?
I've been a member of the Historical Society since 2005, 2006. And a member since 2005 on the list in 2006. My husband actually did the town website. We moved in on 9/11. And about three months after that, he volunteered. He worked on the town website for three years. I've been a member of the newcomers' club. I've been a member of the Mothers Club. I've done games at the carnival as a member of Mothers Club. It just, love.
Captain Oakland. Captain Oakland.
Not Captain Oakland, no. There are so many volunteers. I think one of the reasons that I'm here presenting to you guys today, it's totally on my own. I'm not really representing any of the groups that I've been working with. But I think my biggest problem is that I go to these meetings, and I see the same faces at every single meeting, helping out. I mean, if I say the name Jerry Angermula, she's on every single thing, including the Amblions Corps, okay? At some point, we lose these people.
Yes.
And I don't like to talk about that end of it. At some point, people get exhausted. I mean, styrofoam in this town. If I go on the history of the styrofoam collection, it's not a good one. I mean, I actually, when we first started, the Green Team first started Styrofoam Collection, we had one person who's no longer in this town who was driving styrofoam in her little electric vehicle to the recycling center two or three times a week. And I can say that because my car helped her sometimes. Anytime she had overflow, anytime she couldn't do it, my car was the backup car. And we initially started driving styrofoam, and then it expanded to where we had bins. We got those bins with a grant. The bins disappeared. And then we started collecting seasonally. We do that two or three times a year now because that's all we can handle. Why is that all we can handle? Because we only have five people? Four or five people? I mean, our mayor's been out there helping us, which is phenomenal, and thank you for that. But we have four or five people out in the cold are doing a five-hour, six-hour shift, collecting styrofoam, and then we have people complain that it's not enough. Well, if you want it once a month, come do a two-hour shift. If I can get 10 people to do a two-hour shift, we can do that once a month then. Am I wrong? You know, so that's really, I just don't think people realize that. And my neighborhood right now, I have on a block of maybe 15 houses, I have eight new neighbors in the last three years. And I'm pretty certain they don't know this stuff. So I'm kind of hoping they're watching, and I'm kind of hoping they hear, hey, wait, we can do some stuff. I mean, we bring our kids. We do stuff. I mean, we just recruited a junior member to the Public Events Committee. Why? Because this young lady showed up with her mom every event, and she was right by my side. She doesn't listen to mom, but she listens to the other grownups because we talk to her like a grownup. And I said to her, you've been setting up. You've just spent two, three hours setting up for the Easter for the other kids. You should be a member of this team. How do I do that? Go ask. And now she was signed in. You guys signed her in as a new member of this team. That's what we need to encourage in our kids. I see way too many kids in high school. I do a lot of work in high school. I teach CCD, and I'm now a full-time teacher at a high school. These kids are so trained to, here's the rubric. What do I have to check off to get my A? Oh, I've hit five hours of community service. I'm done. They have forgotten that song, "You Do Good for Goodness' Sake." They've forgotten the feeling. I said, I'm addicted to it. I love seeing the kids light up. I love seeing grownups light up. I mean, we were in the parade for Memorial Day, and people saw my daughters dressed up in the carriage and lit up. A couple of you went and waved at us. I'm like, hey, that's kind of cool. You guys lit up. That's what volunteering in this town does. That's what makes us a gem. That's what gets us farther. We wouldn't have the amazing rec team we have, the amazing rec sports, without those volunteers. So maybe do six hours at soccer instead of eight, and come do recycling for two hours. It's a nice thing to do, okay?
Thank you.
Do you guys have any other questions for me as a volunteer?
No, I just.
Well, thank you. And thank you for your time, guys. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, myself, I'll take it. My name is Nico Carlson. I live six Geronimo Way. Been before, the council before complaining about oral transfers from domestic violence. It's still going on. The town judge is the one that authorizes domestic violence surveillance. It's been going on for 40 years in every municipality I've lived in, where I need law and I need my civil rights.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
It's, I'm being tortured. So if something could be done.
Do you have a lawyer?
No, I'm not able to get one. No one will take my case. There's too many people involved with the state government and the local government, and then there's third parties. It's confusing. It has to do, starts with my father. He's the sole proprietor of the American Express Company, and apparently back in the '70s there was an accident, and there's been one thing after another with sodomy in the family and whatnot. It's a nightmare.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
So, all right, thank you.
Young man from the Boy Scouts like to come up and say hello? So tell us your name, your address, and why you're here.
I'm Kiran Fay.
I can't hear you. You need to speak up.
Use the big voice.
I'm Kiran Fay. I live at 4 Rockaway Avenue, and I'm just here for my citizenship and the community badge, I think.
Here for your citizenship and the community badge? Okay, so you're here to watch the meeting, then?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions for us before you sit down?
No, not really.
Well, welcome to the meeting.
Well, thank you for coming.
We have a motion to close.
So moved.
Do we have a second? All favor?
Aye.
All right. We're up to approval of minutes, May 20th, 2025, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Who said the first? Who said move? John? Thank you.
Does anybody have any changes or discussion? Not seeing any. Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slisinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
I got May 20th, 2025, executive minutes. If anybody's changing, it has to be done. It can only be done in executive. The motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slisinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
I have four Raffel licenses. I got authorized Raffel license RL 1551 for the Sports Association of Oakland on July 3rd, 2025, for a Raffel license to support uniforms, equipment, and offseason training at Rec Field 24 Lower Drive. at Rec Field, 24 Lower Drive. I got authorized Raffel license RL 1552 for Southern Paws on June 27th, 2025, for a Raffel license to support the care of rescue pups of Portobello at 175 Ramapo Valley Road, Oakland, New Jersey. I've got authorized Raffel license RL 1553 for Southern Paws on June 27th, 2025, for a 50-50 license to support the care of rescue pups of Portobello at 175 Ramapo Valley Road. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have the following appointments. These are appointments, mayor with council consent. I have for the Green Team, Ashley Marskavetra. And for the Arts Committee, Marisol Kovaleska. Do I have a motion to approve?
Do we have to approve separately, or?
I've introduced.
You do them together. They're both mayor and council.
Okay, motion.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have the following resolutions. Congratulations, Marisol. Another committee. All right, you have the following resolutions. 25-185, authorized recreational refunds. 25-186, authorized discharge of tax lien. 25-187, Chapter 159 NJ UCF Green Team Community Grant. 25-188, Chapter 159 opioid settlement payment. 25-189, Chapter 159 recycling tonnage grant. 25-190, authorize hire for summer camp counselors. 25-191, appoint OCC secretary. 25-192, appoint Recreation Committee Secretary. 25-193, hire seasonal clerk assistant archiving project. 25-194, approve liquor license renewal for the years 25 to 26. 25-195, approve club liquor license renewals for 2025 through 2026. 25-196, authorize shared service agreement with the premise, for premise for maintenance of fire apparatus. 25-197, authorize grant applications NJ DOT for fiscal year 2026 municipal aid program. 25-198, amend NJ UCF grant application. 25-199, Ramapo Indian Hills High School Field Usage Agreement. 25-200, establish filming regulations. 25-201, refund tax exempt for veteran. 25-202, resolution certifying the governing body has reviewed at a minimum the comment and recommendation set forth in the 2024 annual audit. 25-203, resolution approving the 2024 Annual Audit Corrective Action Plan, 2024 Annual Audit Report. 25-204, authorize auction of police vehicles and bicycles. 25-205, authorize change order number one for Jerome Avenue Phase Two stormwater sewage improvements. And 25-206, authorize settlement for Pacific Construction. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Anybody wish any pulled out? Not seeing any, roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slisinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
I have the following ordinance for introduction. We got 25 Code 960 Forward Planning Committee. Mr. McCann, would you like to address that one?
Sure, Mayor. This ordinance introduction goes back to the discussion we had last year as we were heading into round four for the state's requirements for affordable housing. The, prior to your election to mayor, a lot of the executive action was reactive in our community to events and state mandates and so forth. Talking to some of the members of the council, there always seems to be some sort of reaction instead of proactive planning for what needs to be done. To be fair, sometimes things come up and you can't plan for it. But one of the things that the state of New Jersey's made crystal clear since the 1980s is we are going to have affordable housing in New Jersey, no matter what that does to the characteristics of the suburbs. Whether the people want it or not is really irrelevant. It's something that every mayor and council has to deal with. So going back to my roots as a councilman in Cresskill years ago, many years ago now, we had come up with the idea, concept of a forward planning committee. And what that forward planning committee did was, with the input of every department in the community, including the schools, sit down in a comprehensive way with a planner and with whatever professionals we need, the higher engineers and attorneys, et cetera, and take a look at what the census projections are telling us. Take a look at our comprehensive way, our master plan, and try to come up with basically a 10-year plan, followed up with a midterm, a five-year, you know, plan to coordinate our efforts together collectively as opposed to piecemeal. It worked very well in Cresskill. In fact, even this, in the fourth round now, they were well-positioned to satisfy their obligations pretty easily. One of the few towns that was able to do that, despite the new regional need that has been required. So we took a look at the Cresskill ordinance and taking a look at adapting it more for a more aborial area like Oakland, and just basically took some ideas from Wendy. I want to thank our clerk for her input, it was very important. And all the other council members who had input to this concept of, instead of reacting, being more proactive. It doesn't mean we won't have reactive situations in the future, it just means that we'll have a plan in place, and when we have something pop up, we can see and determine how that fits into our plan and any adjustments that need to be made. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership on this issue, because I know that when we first discussed this concept, you were very interested in it, and you encouraged all of us, including myself, to proceed and explore how that would work in Oakland. So that's the concept of the plan. And if anyone has any questions, any comments, I welcome them.
I'm sure everybody had a chance to read it, it was in your package. Any questions, comments? Nope? Mr. Talamini? Nope?
No, I think it's a great idea. It just makes sense to have something in place so we're more proactive than reactive.
And I just want to comment on something that you had said, Russ, and John, is when we got caught up with the affordable housing, or the housing that went up behind high school, it really kind of caught the K-3 schools off balance. And this Forward Planning Committee will help address these issues so that nobody's caught flat-footed when, you know, when these things happen. So there's a very positive outcome of this.
Yeah, and again, it's, these things pop up, but, you know, when you're talking about affordable housing, the hands of the governing body are pretty much tied. And if you're not planning for it, you end up generally, if you're not managing these situations, you end up probably with the worst possible solutions at the last minute. So the lack of leadership for years, as it specifically relates to this issue, is how you end up with projects that you're seeing being built now. We have the opportunity now to maybe mitigate some of, mitigate these issues by being proactive with any further future developments, and try to keep the character of our town intact.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Councilman Slisinski, any comments?
Yeah, what's the size of the committee? Do you have an idea about how many members there are going to be?
It's right there.
Yeah, it's up to, what's it, 15, Wendy?
Up to 15, no more than 15 members.
Okay, so it's capped at 15?
Yes.
But don't forget that includes a member of the school board. I mean, the schools, I mean, everybody's tied into this. That's why it's, you know, more manageable to be able to share that information back and forth, Russ. Perfect. Thank you.
And I believe the appointments are three-year cycles, except for the first, it's an asset year, which will be this year. And then you can stagger the appointments, you can do two years for a few and so forth. You can do them all, it's really up to us what we want to do and how we want to do it going forward. But the important thing is to get it started and to get a chair of that committee, and to start to call the meetings, and start with what we have today and what we had yesterday, and where we're going, particularly with round four.
Very exciting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I'm good.
Good, okay. All right, that being said, do I have a motion to introduce 25 Code 969 Forward Planning Committee?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slisinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, final adoption will be at the July 15th council meeting here in council chambers.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry, public hearing. Public hearing, public hearing and final adoption. Thank you, Wendy. All right, next we have 25 Code 970 Tennis Court Regulations. Mr. Coons, would you just give us a quick reminder?
Sure. Yeah, so this ordinance amends Section 9-9.2 of the code, and is really meant to address a situation that's proven problematic, where there are decreasing number of people without tennis badges on the tennis courts, not always playing tennis, sometimes doing other things, sometimes it's kids, and it's caused some problems. So the principal change here is to provide a fine mechanism for anybody found to be on the court without a badge, and anybody that has a badge that is found to be sharing the code to the tennis courts, because that has been happening as well, would be subject to either a suspension of their badge privileges or revocation of that badge if it's sort of a persistent issue. So this is sort of, I think, what we felt was probably the mildest way, or at least an intrusive way, that we could to try and address this issue and prevent it from happening.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. All right, do I have a motion to introduce 25 Code 970?
So moved.
Whoop, was that Russ?
That was Russ, and who was that?
Russ, and Mr. McCann.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slisinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, final hearing will be July 15th, and it'll also be open to public for public comment. All right, now we have the following adoptions, following ordinance adoptions. We got 25 Water Capital 965, we got 25 Capital 966, 25 Water Capital 967, and 25 Code 968 Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. Mr. Coons, could you just kind of give us an overview of this?
Sure.
That we discussed last month?
Sure. So I'll take the first two together, Water Capital 965 and Capital 966. Both of those basically replace the emergency funding that you authorized back in May for the improvements and repairs to Lehigh Way. If you recall, we had a water main break there, needed to appropriate some emergency funding to pay for those repairs. It involved not just repairing a section of, replacing a section of the main, but also resurfacing the roadway in the area which had been damaged by the force of the break. So the Water Capital Ordinance funds a portion of that work related to the replacement of the water line. The Regular Capital Ordinance funds the road improvement costs. Those are $110,000 and $155,000 respectively. And then the balance of the funding authorized for the Capital Ordinance 966 funds the purchase of a new Alcatest breathalyzer, which is something that's sort of been kicking around the courts, waiting to get validated for a number of years. We just received word recently that the state wanted us to move forward with that purchase, so we need to provide some funding for that. Water Capital 967 is an ordinance that we try to do pretty regularly, annually, to fund a series of system upgrades and improvements to maintain the integrity of our water system. This one in particular would help cover such items as replacement of anode systems on the tanks, acquisition of replacement water meters, and replacement of water mains, and it is in the total amount of $800,000. I just want to point out, we're calling, these are capital ordinances, these are not bond ordinances. We're not authorizing any debt here. We're using funding available in our, you know, capital reserves and capital improvement fund to pay for these items.
Thank you, Mr. Coons.
All right, and finally, the last one is the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, which was introduced, of course, at the last meeting. This is something that FEMA and the NJDEP are requiring based on their latest model ordinance guidance. They're meant to align the requirements of the State Uniform Construction Code, FEMA National Flood Insurance Protection Program Regulations, and the New Jersey Flood Hazard Area Control Act to improve compliance and really reduce some situations where the regs were potentially at odds with each other. So it's sort of meant to harmonize all of that. It also makes certain technical changes and increases the amount of freeboard required if you're constructing either new or substantially improving structures in the floodplain.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Thank you for the overview on that. All right, let's, we're going to move over, move to final adoption of 25 Water Capital 965, replacement of various water mains on Lehigh Way. Do I have a motion to approve?
We've got to open to the public.
I thought we'd do that, and then we open to public.
No, we open to the public.
We open to the public. You said approve. It's been introduced. So it's here for hearing. All right, so this is here for the, this is for the public, is open to public for public comment? Does anybody wish to discuss?
You said yes? Who motioned? I'm sorry. You did one. Who was the second on the open to the public?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this is to open to public for 25 Water Capital 965. Anybody from the public wish to talk about 25 Capital 965? Not seeing any, do we have a motion to close?
Close, motion to close.
Second.
All right, now it's the final vote on?
All in favor?
All in favor? Getting a little ahead of myself, sorry about that.
It's okay, it's okay, sorry.
I think Wendy's here.
I hate interrupt, I feel bad about that.
This is the final adoption of 25 Water Capital 965, replacement of various water mains on Lehigh Way. Do we have a motion to approve, to adopt?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slisinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, we're up to 25 Capital 966. This is Capital Ordinance Lehigh Way, and also purchasing the Alco Test equipment. Do we have a motion to open to public for public comment?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Carol Ann, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wish to discuss 25 Capital 966, Capital Ordinance Lehigh Way, and the Alco Test? Not seeing anybody, do we have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, do we, all in favor? Okay, do I have a motion for final adoption of 25 Capital 966, Capital Ordinance Lehigh Way and Alco Test?
So moved.
Do I have a second?[1641.83]
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slosinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, we're up to 25 Water Capital 967, various water improvements general. Do I have a motion to open to public for public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Salianni. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wish to discuss 25 Water Capital 967? Not seeing anybody. Do we have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, is the final adoption of 25 Water Capital 967, various water improvements general. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Salianni, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Talamini. Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slosinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, we're up to final adoption of 25 Code 968, Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. Do I have a motion to open to public?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wish to discuss 25 Code 968? Not seeing anybody. Do we have a motion to close?
So moved.
Final adoption, 25 Code 968 Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. Do we have a motion?
Was everybody in favor to close?
All in favor, aye.
Checking, okay. Sorry. Okay.
All right, 25 Code 968 Flood Damage Prevention. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Rose, roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slosinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, we have work section for Access For All logos. I believe this goes to the councilwoman.
And then don't forget my ex.
Carolina?
Yes, so one of our volunteers on Access For All came up with three different proposals for a new logo for, for Access For All to be used on, you know, websites, t-shirts, all that other good stuff, you know, media and everything else. Their intent is at the carnival to have the kids to vote for which one they like, and then it can be brought back to us to vote on it and confirm which one, you know, will be used. So, so that's all of it.
Do you have one that you like?
Yeah, well, I actually like, I mean, I have to say, even though they're computer-generated, she did a great job.
Yeah.
You know, and I, you know.
You like them all?
I like them all, yes.
Okay. Nice political answer, pal. You're learning.
Carol Ann, do you want to just talk briefly about the carnival and Access For All coming in early for the people with disabilities?
Yes, so as everyone knows, the carnival will be opening up early for, for Access For All at 2:30. It's a free event. Hopefully we're going to get, hopefully the weather will be nice.
Until Saturday?
2:30.
Overcast and hot.
Saturday.
Saturday, not all four days.
No, I know that. Yeah, Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday.
At 2:30. Yeah, and it's a, like I said, it's a great event for the kids. There's no, you know, lights, no music or anything else, so it's just for them and...
They need to sign up for it?
I think they already have.
They are.
I mean, we've already reached out to everybody and they've RSVP'd to Jody, so yeah.
They've been doing a great job marketing this.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, yeah. So, yeah.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Good. All right, moving on to new business. Do we have any new business?
Yes, I actually want to, before markets, I do want to piggyback off what the resident said about the ordinance for the cars. We do, I do get a lot of text encounters, you know, do we have ordinances to make sure that people aren't parking on lawns or leaving garbage on lawns? So I think we should look into this and make sure our ordinances are, one, up to speed and, two, we're enforcing them.
Yeah, I think that, you know, as much as the councilman, you know, the other thing that we have to take a look at also is we have a marina downtown on 202, there's boats parked up by buildings. I don't think they belong downtown, and that should certainly be addressed at the same time.
Yes, so can we get this as a working session or how do we push this forward?
Mr. Coons?
We'll have a draft for you of, there's a whole bunch of changes we've actually been sort of working on. That's actually one of them. It's kind of, it's kind of odd. There's a restriction on parking on lawns, like in the DT1 zone, in the business zone, but not in the residential zones. There's some other recommendations we're going to be bringing forth, so look for an ordinance for discussion this summer.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr.?
Mayor?
Sir.
So, I am one of the officers of JAG, which is the Jersey Access Group, the committee, the organization that represents all the municipal TV stations around the state. And in January, we hosted the meeting and I asked the mayor to present, and he, he impressed the other members of JAG so much that they decided to make him legislator of the year.
It's not even an election year. That's why they actually mean something.
This is the first, this is the first time that it's gone to a mayor and not someone either at the state or federal level.
That's great.
Yeah.
Wow. Congratulations. You did it. You came down and knocked it out of the park.
Yeah, get a picture with them.
What's that?
Get a picture with them. Come on, you're usually a college kid.
Wendy's right there. Wendy's got it. Get in. Don't hide.
Don't get me in. One more in this direction. Hold on. Got it. Perfect, thank you.
We also won several other awards, just so you know, the original committee, the TV committee.
I'm sure. Tell us.
The Oakland Dump Award. It's your shot, it's your shot. The Oakland Dump Award. The parade, the, and one other one.
One of the council meetings.
One of the council meetings. They all won first or second or third place in the JAG Awards. And it's thanks to you guys for helping us with the gear, the time, and helping us get volunteers that we appreciate. We appreciate all you do.
You guys do a great job.
You do a great job.
You do a great job. We're up and running all the time.
As far as the dump goes, I mean, I think we helped knock it back.
You're working on me. It actually helped us get...
There you go. So it's a big win for the town and for us and...
And not only that, this is really just transparency in government with the way you guys cover these meetings. I mean, even for the me, special meeting on the 23rd, I had asked you guys to come down.
We will be there.
So that, you know, every, the residents understand, like, this fourth round, affordable housing and what we're dealing with. So, so thank you for doing that. And obviously, people that don't know it's on public access, and it's also on YouTube, so people can go back at a later date, the way you guys archive that. So thank you.
Yeah, trying to make Oakland, keep it a great place to live and keep our taxes down, and all our volunteers help do that.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well done. Well done. Put that in a list, we'll put it into our agenda for next month. Put that, those awards in a, you know, those, in a list.
Yeah, sure. I thought we did that already. I guess we'll have to...
I see it.
Do it again. We'll do it again. We talked about it.
Does anybody else have any new business?
On the award floor.
Anybody have any new business?
The most viewed.
Anybody have any old business? Not seeing any.
See a flyer coming.
We have community liaison reports. We'll start with Mr. Talamini.
So I have recreation, nothing to report really, just that there's a meeting on June 30th at 8:00 PM at the Danny D Building. And just also, like, they say we could always use more volunteers, coach your kids, take the classes, it's a great thing, and come to the Danny D meetings, we'll get you set up. All right? Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Salianni?
So I have a few reports. I'm going to start with public safety. I do want to, this is from EMS. So EMS, for the months of May, they drove 1,267 miles, had 55 calls for service, serviced 34 residents and 21 non-residents, they had 750 hours spent on duty for the, for the First Day Squad members. I also want to highlight something that happened on Saturday. I was with the mayor and with Councilwoman Rose, and there was a blood drive that was conducted by the EMS. And this blood drive was, was for, Gary Lazzetta Blood Drive, and it's a, it's a drive to, it's a drive for, to help people who need, who need the blood donating. And there's 39 pints, 39 pints were collected. So that's up, that's basically double from last year. And then I know, I know, Mayor, you're going to do a blood drive in a couple weeks, so we're working on that. So I want to thank everyone who was part of that. I think that was, it was a great, it was a great cause, and it was nice to see the residents of Oakland show up and support. The OFC, on the OFC report, very simply, the communications committee is at the carnival, will be at the carnival every day and invite you to stop by the communications table to talk to the volunteers about work they're doing and how you can get involved with the OCC. As you can see, we have an active committee, we win awards, the mayor gets awards, so any, any members who want to join, it's a, it's a great group and great to meet them at the carnival. You can learn about new things, like our Oakland TV app, and also come, and also you can come away with a free reusable bag. We look forward to seeing everyone there at the carnival. If you want to be a part of this team, please, the committee are looking for a few volunteers. If you're interested in joining the bulletin board committee, newsletter committee, television committee, or the welcome website, or the social media committee, please contact myself or email OCC@Oakland-NewJersey.org to learn more. Oakland TV, though, as we were talking about, where can we watch these great awards that we won? Oakland TV can now be watched live on the Borough website and on new Oakland TV app. Those wanting to go online can, can go to www.Oakland-NewJersey.org Communications Commission and click the Watch Oakland TV Live button. You can also search Oakland Television on your Android or iPhone, download the Oakland TV app, or go onto your Apple TV, Amazon Fire, Android TV, or Roku, and search Oakland TV to watch. There's one board seat still open for the Friends of the Oakland Communication Commission that has the fundraising arm to help the Oakland Communications Commission get resources to so they can keep filming our meetings and give the transparency we're discussing. So that one board seat is open. If anyone is interested, please reach out to the Oakland, to the Oakland Communications Commission. And then the next OCC meeting is July 7th at 7:00 PM, right here in Council Chambers. Now, let's talk about the fun stuff. More importantly, the carnival.
Yay!
So, as, as, as we discussed, the carnival is from Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, June 18th, June 19th, June 20th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And on Saturday, it opens at 5:00 PM and ends at 11:00 PM. And also, we want to highlight on Saturday, June 21st, Access For All will be from 2:30 to 4:30. They'll take a half hour break, and then, and then the carnival will open to the public again at 5:00 PM. So one thing I want to talk about, the Public Events Committee, we do a great job. So happy to be part of the liaison, to be honest. Even I wasn't liaison, I used to attend the events just to help out because they do such a great job for the community. This is the only fundraiser the Public Events does all year, right? So we need, so when you come, we come to this, this Public Events fundraiser goes toward the Halloween Parade, the Toys for Tots, the Christmas tree in North Lane, the Easter Egg Hunt, town lawn cleanup, Memorial Day Parade, Fever Pitch for the Recreation, and, and, and also, also we...
Truck event in the library.
The Truck at the Library, thank you. There's, so basically, this money funds, this, so many other events of the year, so that's why we need, that's why we need everyone, everyone to join. And I also want to make sure everyone, to point out, Marisol went into a little bit. A lot of the 501(c)(3), so if you don't want to go in riots, come down, between, all the 501(c)(3) is used as their fundraisers too, especially around the food. And this isn't, we want, we want to support the, we want to support the Zappo guy, we want to support the limited stand, but also the Boy Scouts, Father's Club, Knights, Mother's Club, Rotary, Pond Church, I might be missing, the cops even have donuts that they give away. With that being said, you come down, you're supporting other community members, and the food's homemade. It's better than you get anywhere else, so please come down and support the carnival.
Pops has the best donuts, and the Green Team is giving away bag boxes and birdhouses for free. So, other than a bag, you can get some swag.
You just want to remind everybody the wristbands? Yes, one more, and remember, the wristband cutoff is tomorrow at 3:00 PM for the discount.
For the advance, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman McCann?
I just want to thank Marisol for your, your well, your presentation earlier tonight and your, your, lack of a better term, your pitch for more volunteers. Every town struggles with that and has been for years, although we recognize there's been a shift, especially since COVID. And I, you know, thank you from the bottom of my heart, I'm sure I speak for everyone here for all the work that you've been doing since 2005, you said? I think I smell a certificate coming, Mayor.
I don't need a certificate, just send it to kids my way.
I know you don't, but that's, but that's why you probably should, you should do, you should do one. As it relates to Oakland, I have, I have nothing as it relates to my committees, but I just do want to acknowledge history. In the last several hours and several days, the world is, is in trouble. And we, we want to pray for our service people, I'm sure, everyone here would join me in that, and our men and women in uniform, and not just men and women in uniform, but the Department of Defense has civilians deployed across the planet as well, and all the, all the support that the military receives from those people. My thoughts and prayers are with the people of Iran and the people, of course, of Israel. As, as rockets are raining on the civilian population in Israel, it's, it's a terrible situation. I want to credit the state of Israel for targeting military targets, you know, in Iran as opposed to the civilian population, as what, is what's going on with the theocracy in Iran. And I pray the decision makers in our country are wise in making the determinations, and my thoughts and prayers for those decision makers, whether it's the President of the United States, the head of the Department of Defense, the Secretary of State, all, this whole team, national security. My thoughts and prayers are all the civilians and anyone that's caught up in this conflict. Just want to express my concern for that.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Soslinski?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief update on the library. There's a lot of activities coming up at the library. Programs throughout June include the big concert on Friday, June 27th at 7:00 PM, Mark Burger and the Ride Band live on the library stage. Summer reading also kicks off on June 25th, and they will have free ice cream out front for families to come and sign their children up for the program. There are too many details to read off here, but the library staff would like me to let you know to sign up for the summer reading program. They have programs for children, young adults, and adults that allow you to track your reading and win cool prizes. Visit their website or call for more information at 201-337-3742. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. Shetree Committee met on Monday, June 2nd. I don't have much to report there. The foresters put in 46 hours, issued 34 permits, 104 trees were removed, and 55 were replaced. Their next meeting is Monday, July 7th at 7:30. Arts in Oakland met yesterday, or last night. The Oakland Market is in full swing, off to a soggy start with the weather. Their next date is June 28th, and it runs twice a month through November. They have some great vendors there, so come out and support our vendors. There is a juried art exhibition and sale at the Oakland Public Library, the Autumn Art Show. It will be from October 12th to November 15th. And Murder Mystery Event, they will be conducting auditions in September. More details to follow. Performance will be in October, October 16th and 17th at the Senior Center. And that's it.
I just want to make a quick comment. The, the trees that they put on Oak Street by the post office on 202 and Oak Street, I tell you, it was really, they did a nice job putting the three trees in there, just really green up that area. There was a sea of asphalt that was out there.
I'm actually going to get one of those trees for my front house.
So if a person wants a tree, how do they do, how do they go about it?
You have to reach out to the Shetree. There's a, it's an adopt a tree program, and you get, you know, they'll sign you up. I think there's a waiting list, but yeah, they will sign you up for it.
Terrific. Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
All right, we are up to bills to be paid.
All right. Total bills to be paid, $1,008,898.98. So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not seeing any, roll call.
Councilman, Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slosinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Is that a favor? All right, we have, just the next meeting is, the next official Borough meeting is, will be held Tuesday, July 15th. However, just a reminder for everybody, there is a special meeting, special meeting, joint planning board and council meeting on the 23rd of this month, 7:00 PM down at the Senior Center to discuss affordable housing. Thank you so much, everybody, and have a pleasant evening.
Good job, my man.
Meeting adjourned.